To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
We would like to take a moment of silence for Councilman Warple lost his mother today, so we want to give a moment of silence for her. Thank you all.
Alexander.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple. Rakos.
Here.
And Spitali.
Spitali.
Here.
Okay, we have eight present, one absent, and one present on Zoom. Seven in chambers. Mayor.
Hi, I didn't know if there was going to be, I must have missed it, I'm sorry. Thanks, Councilman, I wanted to start off, I'm sure you guys already mentioned it, but Councilman Warple lost his mother today, and I know his family's going through a lot right now, so I just wanted to let the Councilman know, I know he's not here right now, but I'm sure he's watching, that we're all thinking about him, and it's, you know, his mother's a wonderful person, and we're really sorry about what his family's going through, I know Councilman Hamm's going through a similar situation with his family right now with his mother as well, so I just wanted Dave to know we're thinking about him as well. There's a lot of sickness in the world right now, and a lot of our friends are suffering, so just wanted to start off and acknowledge, there's a lot of people going through some tough times right now. To update you, I wanted to start off with something the council's aware of, and I wanted to mention it publicly, because I have a feeling next council meeting this is going to come up, I have a strong feeling that the next council meeting this is going to come up, so I wanted to talk about it publicly for the first time, something that we talked about in executive session a couple of weeks ago, about a lawsuit that was filed against City Hammond by James Hill. Lawsuit was filed a few years back, we've been litigating this through ICORN and ICORN for the better part of the last three years. To give you an idea who James Hill is, James Hill was accused by the Hammond Police Department in 1980 of rape, robbery, and unlawful deviant conduct. This was shortly after Officer Posolak was murdered, and the Hammond Police Department was going out looking for people that were suspected in that crime, Mr. Hill got swept up in that, he was charged with a different crime, although I think the Hammond Police Department felt strongly that he was also part of Officer Posolak's murder. This was a long time ago, 1980, I was 11 years old at the time, little did I know, in 1980, this was going to land on our desk. Mr. Hill was convicted by Lake County jury in 1982 on all three counts of rape, robbery, and unlawful deviant conduct, he was sentenced to 35 years in prison. Mr. Hill served 17 and a half years in prison, split between Michigan City and Westville, he was ultimately released in 1998 after 17 and a half years in prison, once DNA evidence, which was available in the 1990s, cleared him of the rape. He went to jail for rape, robbery, and unlawful deviant conduct, obviously if DNA clears him on the rape, he probably shouldn't have done 17 and a half years, he got out of Lake County, he gets out of the federal prison system, files lawsuit against the City Hammond. Because when we take over, we've been litigating this case now for a number, number of years, we spent a lot of money litigating this case, the case went to trial about six months ago, I'm sure you're all aware, we talked about at the time, there was a $25 million verdict entered against the City Hammond in that trial. That's a massive verdict, obviously concerning, I do feel that City has some liability, I think everybody was shocked at the amount of that verdict. Obviously, Mr. Hill went to prison for seven, 17 and a half years, obviously that's worth a lot. The jury in that case felt it was worth $25 million, we appealed. When you appeal, the 25 million doesn't go away, it starts collecting interest, we collected close to a million dollars in interest while we were on appeal, so the clock is ticking while we file our appeal. We felt strongly on our appeal, we thought it was a great appeal, it was similar to an appeal we filed in another case, very similar to this, went down in the same timeframe, a few years back called the Larry May's case, we felt strongly that we were going to be successful in our appeal to the Seventh Circuit, which is one step below the US Supreme Court, they accepted, they agreed to hear our case, we were litigating a case when we were mandated to go through mediation. We went through one mediation that was not mandatory, it was voluntary, and we got a little bit closer, but not that close. Seventh Circuit mandated that we go to mediation again, obviously the purpose of mediation is try to resolve disputes so that you don't have to go forward with litigation or an appeal in this case. At that mediation, we reached a verbal agreement for $9 million. So I want to talk to you a little bit about that. We reached a settlement in principle with Mr. James Hill and his attorneys in regard to both of his lawsuits against the City Hammond and Detective Michael Solan. Michael Solan was also held liable individually and punitively, he had punitive damage award of over a half a million dollars. Mike Solan himself was personally responsible for that. This lawsuit, if it does become finalized, which I anticipate it will become finalized, once signatures are attached to the settlement document, the case will be settled, which means that I'll be coming to you with bond paperwork for my $9 million bond. It's a judgment bond, which is paid off the top, which is the only good news in this, but this is a liability that we're going to have from the City Hammond. I want to remind the council that I was 11 years old when this happened, so you can do your own math on how old you were, this is nobody, nobody's fault that's currently a Hammond police officer, this is nobody's fault that's an elected official for the City Hammond, this is liability that we had going back to 1980. So this, we do have an agreement in principle, but as everybody knows, until it's, we sign on the dotted line, we don't have an agreement in writing, but I strongly, I feel strongly that this is going to settle, that it's going to ultimately settle for $9 million, and then I'm going to be coming to you at the next council meeting with that paperwork. So before I get on with the rest of my report, I did talk to the council for the public that's watching this, we are allowed to meet in an executive session, and we did meet in executive session where I indicated to the council that I thought there was going to be a settlement, there is a settlement, I'm not sure if you all have any questions. I don't know the details on how much it's going to cost us annually, we're trying to stretch the payments out as long as possible, we'll have more of those details in the coming weeks. This does put this case to rest once and for all, this takes care of all attorney fees, all interest, everything, it was a $25 million verdict with interest, and we got it settled for nine, I think it was a good case. I think that was a really good number, it sucks, but I walked away not happy, and they definitely walked away not happy, the plaintiffs walked away not happy, they wanted more, they thought they were going to get closer to 25 million, I walked away not thrilled, because last time I had a case like this, it cost us four and a half, so this cost us more. Usually when everybody walks away a little upset, those are the best deals, that's what I've learned in my years of experience as your mayor, so I don't know if you have any questions about this. I just thought it was a proper time to talk about it publicly, we've already talked about it privately, so I don't want anybody out there thinking if there's no questions asked, it doesn't, that the council doesn't have interest in this, we've already had this discussion publicly, privately in executive session. Nothing? Okay. I also wanted to just give you an update over the last couple of weeks, met with South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau officials regarding the development of a possible fishing pier and walking track surrounding Optimus Lake, which is right by the Convention and Visitors Center. There's some interest in, from the Little Cayman River Basin Authority in helping us with that, there's also interest with South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I think it would be a good tourist attraction, it's right off the highway there, there's a lot of hotels down there, and it's a lake that's 100 feet deep, believe it or not, over 100 feet deep, so, yeah, it's funny, it's man-made lake, but it's deep, deep, there's a crane in the middle of it, so if you ever want to go diving. Summer concert series at the Pab started last Friday, which is great, the band together played a concert, this concert is being put on by the Hammond Port Authority, Joe Gajewski's in charge of this project, but Mylan Krasinski and the Hammond Port Authority are putting it on, it's on Fridays, I believe it's, I think it's every other Friday, it works out, is it every other Friday, Councilman? It's about that, I don't know if it's always every other Friday, but the next one, we skipped last Friday, the next one's coming up this week when Sounds of Santana plays, free of charge, no booze is served, but you can bring booze with you, there is food offered through food trucks and stuff like that, we had HTC and the entrepreneurial cooks out there last week, so can't beat the price, no charge to park, no charge to come in, Sounds of Santana next week, I know we have really good bands throughout the whole summer, so if you have any interest in that, you can check out Go Hammond, or you can check out the Port Authority website. Celebrated Juneteenth, which was nice, obviously it's a national holiday now, so the city had a day off, but we had a really nice celebration in MLK Park in the reflection area, I want to thank Councilwoman Katrina and Councilwoman Berry for participating in that function, I thought it was a really nice, nice time, it was a really good turnout, and a lot of participation in the fair out there, a lot of people out there, so it was really nice. I also attended the Bishop Knoll Institute groundbreaking for their new athletic fields, along with the bishop, and a lot of BNI alumni, it's a multimillion dollar project, they're turfing pretty much everywhere, they play football, they're turfing there, where the softball and baseball is getting turfed, they're putting a track around the whole thing, it's a real big program that BNI is putting together, wanted to congratulate them, Paul Mulaney and everybody at Bishop Knoll on their groundbreaking, and the bishop, and happy that City Hammond could be part of that. Held Mayor's Night Out in the 3rd District, I want to thank Councilwoman Berry for hosting, and the Hammond Sportsplex, it was well attended, lots of questions, always a good place. Merge Building had a street arts festival that was real cool, Merge Building's right across the street from home, from Harrison Park, right here in the 3rd, they had a street art festival on Saturday, and they had famous street artists from all over the world come to that building and paint it with graffiti, and it's gorgeous, so if you get a chance to go check it out, go check it out. Felix, Flex Waldenotto, who's a famous region guy that does a lot of our murals, did a big part of it as well, but there's all kinds of famous artists that did that, it's all in support of the Hammond Arts Foundation, a new non-for-profit that's been put together, so I want to thank everybody for participating in that. We did have the free ticket giveaway for the Little Wayne, sorry, we did have the free ticket giveaway for the Little Wayne concert on June 24th, that was the day of the free ticket giveaway, we gave away 2,600 tickets to Hammond residents, all in twos, so there was over 1,300 people that showed up on Saturday morning, some as early as 4:00 in the morning. Most people got there around 6:00 or 7:00 AM, we didn't give out tickets till 9:00, but the people that got there at 9:00 still got tickets, so, hey, I appreciate people getting there early, though, it was really cool. Last but not least, met with Pastor Polk today, talk about Memorial Park housing development, real excited about that project. We got a boost with Secretary Buttigieg and the Department of Transportation, giving us extra money for Governor's Parkway project, that freed up money that we could use to help build infrastructure of Memorial Park, so we're talking with confidence when we talk about Memorial Park now, because we have the money to get the infrastructure done, and I know Pastor Polk's excited about it, as well as the city, and we're going to be going to Affiliastine probably within the next couple of months, by the end of August, I'd imagine, we'll have a public meeting at Affiliastine, where we'll gauge the community's input on what the project's going to look like. Festival of Lakes lineup set, but that's been set, and if the council doesn't have any other questions, I apologize about the long report. Hi, Councilman.
Mayor, any update on the housing project at Cartfield?
I don't have a specific date, Councilman Mark, but I know yours is real close, as far as we're getting close to the bid date, I wish, Kevin is not here, do you know, Councilman?
I don't.
I want to say it's in July, where we're doing the public bidding for the lots. I'm pretty sure it's in July, Councilman Mark, I think it's after the fest, like late July, going off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure I heard Kevin say that a couple of times.
Okay.
And that's going to be just like when we did the Los Marches States, Councilman, where you just put up a lot and bid on it, and some of the lots go cheap, some of the lots have multiple bidders, so.
And anything you'd like the data center?
I haven't heard much, to be honest with you, I talked to Mr. Dawkins, I'll reach out to him again, I haven't talked to him in a while, but Mr. Dawkins and I usually talk once a month, I haven't, I owe him a phone call actually, but I haven't heard much lately, Councilman, but everything with this whole AI boom, and the fact that all the tech companies are doing really well, I don't think that's hurting us a bit with the data center. If I had to picture what I think data center will look like 20 years from now when we're all done, I think the data center's going to be owned by Facebook or something like that, Google, some big company will buy it, probably build a campus there, I don't think it's going to be one data center either. I think honestly that's what's going to happen, I don't know when it'll happen, but some big company will come along, buy that whole area, and probably build a couple data centers there, if I were going to, you know, make prediction. So, any other questions? Thank you, guys, again, sorry about everybody's families going through so much sickness, seems like a really tough time for a lot of people right now, thank you, nice to see you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next up on the agenda, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from June 12, 2023, be placed on file, please.
Second. Motion made, second by Councilman Emerson, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated June 14, 2023, and ending with claims stated June 21, 2023, claim number 3771 through claim number 4259 inclusive, in the amount of $15,576,476.33. I so move.
There's been a motion to plead for claims, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali, any discussion? Any discussion? Discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple. Rakos.
Yes. Claims passes nine, or eight, zero, one absent. Next up, public hearings, we have none today, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kelwinski.
The Neighborhood Association is holding its monthly meeting at the Hammond Mall on Sunset Calumet 141st, Tuesday tomorrow at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Hammers for Hearts is back, glad to see this back, so if we have any of our elderly that would like to get an application, they can apply between August 1st and August 31st, just want to put it out there ahead of time, and the camp for, the work camp will begin July 21st through July 27th, so glad to see Hammers for Hearts back, know that it was something great for the community when it was here before, and it allows the elderly to get some painting and things done like that for their homes.
Thank you, any other communications? Any other communications?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone who contributed to the community celebration for the Hammond Central Boys Basketball Team, we had a great time last week, we had a barbecue, bounce house, there were some games out there, DJ, so really just wanted to celebrate those young men on their big accomplishment this season, the majority of the seniors are going to go play college basketball, or at least kind of go into their field of study, so excited to see what they have to offer the city as they return back home, but I want to thank Councilwoman Alexander, I want to thank Myra Alvarez, Brandon Dorsey with Jumper Fund, and there were a couple other funders, I'm sorry I'm blanking on, oh, Kevin Smith, so Smith and Sursick for your support, the Hammond Fire Department was there, the Police Department showed support, so I want to thank everybody for coming out and showing up and contributing to that, and then also start Hammond Urban Enterprise Association too for their support, so thank you, everybody, the kids had a great time, community had a great time, it was also the 50th reunion for the classes of 1973 from Hammond High and Hammond Tech, so they were out there and enjoyed spending time with the young men as well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I'm sorry, I want to also give kudos to Awana Menlo and her team for the Juneteenth celebration, it was, the mayor mentioned it, it was awesome, but during that celebration, we were able to honor the boys' basketball team for their regional championship, so that was something to see them get those awards from the city as well.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings, Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, July 12, at 1:00 PM. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at Affiliastine on July 18, at 6:00 PM. Edison Community Watch will not meet until September, when school reopens. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet, they have a meeting August 8, but before that, they're having a block party at Harrison Park, and that will be July 22. Hessville Crime Watch will not meet in July. Urban Community Watch will not meet until September, when school opens again. South Holman Neighborhood Watch will not meet until October, somewhere around there, they have semi-annual meetings, and the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet on Thursday, July 13, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. I urge everyone to go to a crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood, and in the city for that matter, because community is not just about meet, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
From the Streets and Alley Committee, I'd like to happily report that the work is being started, started last week on Summer Street, between Columbia and Indianapolis, total construction of sewers and curves and sidewalks, sidewalks are from Columbia all the way to Indianapolis, so the residents on the 12th through 1500 block of Summer and Sherman Street have been waiting that for many, many years, so it's finally getting started. Like they already know, it's a two-year project, over two-year project, so brace yourself for additional construction in this city, and that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Torres.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
We have a little bit on the Capitol Board, the Capitol Board meeting, we met on the 20th of June, under new business allocation and funding for state line road closure, under charge, under order number one, to the Requalify Construction Company, the amount of $50,942.42 was approved.
Second item was a funding allocation for Holman Avenue Reconstruction Phase One, charge order number 10 was approved, the amount was for $5,090.70. And the third item came up for the allocation of 200-block Ogden Street Alley, for the amount of $31,276, with the milestone contractors north. The, the way this went, Mr. Councilman, do you want to say anything about this, because you had the part of this, did we help with that, do you want to go with that? This was with, the Councilman Torres requested that the Capitol Board improvement would split the cost of $62,552 with the 2nd District Gaming, so we came up with that on, with the other half was the $31,276.
Well, that's, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
That's with the alley on 200-block of Ogden, the north alley, which is in drastic need of repair, and it's, again, the people's been waiting for it for a long time, and it's finally getting done. Total construction is $62,000, I was told 66, but I'm sure.
62,552.
62,5, okay, so I'm glad to hear it came down a little bit, but it's finally going to get done.
Okay, thank you for the Capitol Improvement Board report. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports, committee reports is closed. Next on agenda ordinance, third and final reading, we have none, number 10, introduction of ordinances.
23, 2313, an ordinance vacating a 145-foot portion of the 5,900 block of Jackson Avenue in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for a first and second passage of ordinance 2313, with an intent to consider a public meeting set for Monday, July 10, at 6:00 PM.
Second. Second.
Okay, the second was by Councilwoman Alexander, we have a motion and a second for 23-13, with an intent to consider any public hearing on July the 10th at 6 o'clock. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
This ordinance is just to vacate a portion of land, actually give it back to the owners of the property next to it, so they can establish their side yard, and allow for them to do with that property as they would like, nothing too intensive here, it was approached by Mr. Novak to get this passed, so I know that he's there in attendance, it would also offer him the chance to share any additional information if you would like.
Okay, we're up for first and second reading, would you like to speak now, or?
I'll speak at the next meeting.
Okay, that works, that works. Does anybody else have any questions, or any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple. Rakos.
Yes. First and second reading passes, eight, zero, one absent. That's the extent of our introduction ordinances. Resolutions, we have none, any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
There will be a ribbon cutting this Thursday at 6:29, at 23, obviously, at 3:30 PM at Calumet at River Drive, regarding the new bike bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, and once again, I should have announced this under communications, but I did want to reiterate our fireworks ordinance, fireworks are permissible from 5:00 PM until 2 hours after dusk, which is generally about 8:30, quarter to 9:00, so do the math on that, beginning Janu, June 29, going through June 30, July 1, July 2, July 3, July 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Fireworks are also permissible on the 4th of July, from 10:00 AM until 12:00 midnight. After that, please respect your neighbors, and please be very careful, so you don't start any fires, and for those of you thinking ahead, New Year's Eve, fireworks are permissible from 10:00 AM until 1:00 AM on New Year's Eve, so thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings, Community
Councilwoman Alexander.
Just like Councilwoman Vines mentioned about 4th of July, I just ask the residents do not shoot firearms up in the air during the 4th of July to make them seem as if they are fireworks because we do not, we know that what must go up has to come down and we would not want anyone in our city to get hurt because of a stray bullet. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, we have George Stoya from Robertsdale.
Yeah, I was just, wanted to add a clarification. Sarah Reese did a good story on that Solon case. There's some dazzling stuff. That guy cost us some money. In addition to that, there's, there's, whoa. There's $25 million that we were hit with and then $500,000 in punitive damages in addition to, I think around $400,000 in costs, returning season costs, so.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
The motion, do I have a second? Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.